To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberally and justly for all.
John S.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
John H.
Here.
Annette.
Here.
Tracy Allen.
Here.
Barbara.
Doug.
Here.
Alan.
Here.
Juliana.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record newspaper, the borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
Thank you. Tracy Allen, would you read the mission statement?
Sure. The mission of the Riverdale School District is...
So Matt Lee's coming from another school district.
...to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you. At this point in the agenda, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items only.
Why would I just bring up an item? Did you say open to the public?
For agenda items.
For agenda items only.
There'll be a second session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, here it is. Our presentation by Matt Lee is going to be delayed, so...
Yeah, he's coming from another school district, so he said probably around 8:15 he would be here. So we'll just break where we are at that point in the meeting and have him do his presentation.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to have the student member report.
For the middle school report, we would like to congratulate the HAWK Student Spotlight recipients for the month of January. Students are nominated by staff members for modeling great academic performance and/or high character. They are Zoan, Brianna Barber, Oscar Camino, Chris Dengel, Arhan Basel, Nicole and Sam Blettle, and Sophia Constantino. Over the last month, the Middle School Interact Club collaborated with the high school to take part in the Super Bowl Challenge, competing against Ramapo High School to see which school could collect the most cans of soup. All donations will help feed the hungry in Bergen County. The eighth-grade student ambassadors recently held a fundraiser to benefit those affected by the California wildfires. They sold bracelets during lunch and ran two separate bake sales after school. The proceeds, which were close to $700, were combined with those of the high school American Red Cross Club, distributed to the Red Cross Direct Relief and Pasadena Humane Society. This week, the middle school is hosting the Scholastic Book Fair. Students will be able to visit the library with their English classes or individually during lunch or after school. The fair will run the entire week with a percentage of the proceeds going back to the school.
And for the high school report, as the third marking period begins, the students and staff have all started off strong. The atmosphere has been great as usual as we get closer and closer to spring. To start off the marking period, administrators like Mr. Pepe, Ms. Correa, Mr. Flanagan, and Dr. Albro talked to each grade level separately to let them know about all the general things going on for the grade and anything else they needed to know. Thank you so much to them for helping us out all the time and keeping us all in check. As winter sports begin to wrap up, we want to thank all the athletes for continuing to represent Riverdale in a positive way and always show good sportsmanship. Congrats to the boys' basketball team for moving on to the BIT tournament and going to the Final Four. Congrats to all the members of the track team and swim team that competed at state sectionals this weekend, and a huge good luck to all the athletes that are competing this week in state sectionals. Also, we would like to highlight the winner of the valedictorian, which is Bobby Cook, and our sedutorian, which is Brady He, and we want to say we're very proud of them for working so hard.
President's report. I have nothing to report tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendents.
Yeah, just one item, and it's preemptive. I was going to speak after Matt Lee's presentation, but I'll talk about what I was going to mention. Mr. Lee will come in from school boards, and he's going to go over the three sessions that we had for strategic planning. And at the end, he was going to talk about, I'm just previewing what he's going to say, talk about the action plan that is to come next. I will be responsible for the action plan and bringing that to the board. Once Mr. Lee is finished with his presentation, I go back to my administrators, and we develop an action plan to meet the goals and objectives. We present that to the board, probably by our next meeting. So that's my only items to report. So now, we don't really need Matt Lee, I guess. But he will be here shortly to make his presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. Committee reports. Budget and finance. John?
We're trying to schedule meetings for March 3rd and 6th. After the meeting today, we'll lock the dates down with Trudy.
Thank you.
Facilities and security. We had a meeting, I think it was last Tuesday, if I remember correctly. We had the architectural firm do presentations to the committee on upcoming renovations for the culinary, 18 to 21 area, and then also the auditorium, their plans and what they're going to look like. Committee had some suggestions that they're going to take back and do some minor revisions to the plans. And also, we also had a brief discussion on the project management firm, which will be on the agenda tonight for approval.
Thank you. Community relations and technology.
Barbara, she's not here.
Barbara's not here. Curriculum.
We met, I believe it was February 3rd. We met with Mr. DeLora, and we reviewed the new course offerings that will be going forward, in addition to some key changes of programs in study at the high school, which we were impressed by. It was a very thorough, transparent document with an abundance of information that really aids students in developing their own path, piggybacking on what Mr. Kufer said. We're excited about what the referendum and all the new facility upgrades and how we're going to make the best utilization of that through curriculum enhancements going forward in September. So we're excited. Thank you.
Thanks. Policy and governance.
We have nothing to report at this time, and future meetings will be determined based on...
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I move that all items designated with an asterisk be part of the consent agenda and approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Alan, one quick question. Is the board meetings part of that consent agenda or not?
Which one?
The board meetings, the minutes?
They are.
Yes.
It doesn't, the asterisk's in the wrong place, though I see it.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead.
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay, 12A. Whereas 6A, 23A-5.3 provides that a school district may request a waiver of compliance with respect to the district's participation in the special education Medicare initiative. Trudy, could you elaborate on this?
So this is, it's for the next year's budget, and it's determined based on how many students. And if you have less than 40 students, you don't have to participate in the program. And if we were to participate, it's a huge, it's very involved in participating in semi, and so we have less than the 40 students. So we ask for a waiver every year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Trudy?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13H. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending January 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13N. Whereas a group number of Board of Education in Burton County have joined together to form a joint insurance group as permitted by NJ Title 18A dot 18B. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John Samuel.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John Housley.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13O. The superintendent and board secretary recommend that the board appoint Burton Agency Incorporated, hereafter referred to as the consultant, to serve as the risk management consultant. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
I have a question. Is this a different consultant than we normally use?
We switched back in '22 to this consultant.
I'll second.
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13S. Whereas the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, known as the Board, advertised for bids for the interior renovations at Riverdale High School project, whereas Northeastern Interior Services, further known as Northeastern, submitted the lowest bid with a base bid in the amount of $3,338,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13T. Whereas the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, hereafter referred to as the Board, has solicited proposals for onsite construction management services for alterations, renovations of the high school, which services fall within the definition of an extraordinary unspecified service. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Under T where it says, whereas the business administrator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the services, should it read, will exceed that amount or will not exceed that amount?
You see where she's... Here, Tracy.
Where are you, Tracy Allen?
Second paragraph under T.
Here.
Second where...
The second whereas will not exceed.
Will exceed. Yes, because...
You want to do it?
In order to go after an RFP, it had to be over $17,500. So that is correct.
Because if it's under, you can just appoint, right?
Correct. For something like this.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to move from our executive session earlier tonight. I'd like to move 3A, 2, B1, E1, E2, E3, and E4. And I'd just like to summarize that these are resignations of some coaches, hiring of new coaches, and a building superintendent employee. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Two seconds.
Tracy.
Thank you.
Very. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13T. Whereas the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, hereafter referred to as the Board, has solicited proposals for onsite construction management services for alterations, renovations of the high school, which services fall within the definition of an extraordinary unspecified service. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Under T where it says, whereas the business administrator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the services, should it read, will exceed that amount or will not exceed that amount?
You see where she's... Here, Tracy.
Where are you, Tracy Allen?
Second paragraph under T.
Here.
Second where...
The second whereas will not exceed.
Will exceed. Yes, because...
You want to do it?
In order to go after an RFP, it had to be over $17,500. So that is correct.
Because if it's under, you can just appoint, right?
Correct. For something like this.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13O. The superintendent and board secretary recommend that the board appoint Burton Agency Incorporated, hereafter referred to as the consultant, to serve as the risk management consultant. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13N. Whereas a group number of Board of Education in Burton County have joined together to form a joint insurance group as permitted by NJ Title 18A dot 18B. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. 13T. Whereas the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, hereafter referred to as the Board, has solicited proposals for onsite construction management services for alterations, renovations of the high school, which services fall within the definition of an extraordinary unspecified service. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Under T where it says, whereas the business administrator has determined and certified in writing that the value of the services, should it read, will exceed that amount or will not exceed that amount?
You see where she's... Here, Tracy.
Where are you, Tracy Allen?
Second paragraph under T.
Here.
Second where...
The second whereas will not exceed.
Will exceed. Yes, because...
You want to do it?
In order to go after an RFP, it had to be over $17,500. So that is correct.
Because if it's under, you can just appoint, right?
Correct. For something like this.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Annette.
Yes.
Tracy Allen.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to move from our executive session earlier tonight. I'd like to move 3A, 2, B1, E1, E2, E3, and E4. And I'd just like to summarize that these are resignations of some coaches, hiring of new coaches, and a building superintendent employee. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Two seconds.
Tracy.
Thank you.
Very. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
an award in the year 2030, and Riverdale Public Schools are being recognized as a model district for student achievement, and we asked them, what are the things that would have been present in the district in order to help us achieve that milestone? And that is where we got our sort of visions for how we move forward, and here are some of the visions that were put forward in those group discussions. Using what we call common threads from meetings one and two, we are able to identify five key goal areas that are going to be the framework for our strategic plan moving forward, and these are a reflection of those things that we identified as strengths, some of the areas that we wanted to improve in, and some of the sort of forward-thinking programs and areas of work that we want to concentrate on. So those goal areas are what you see there on that slide, one through five. And in that meeting three small group work, we asked the groups to take the strengths and challenges and the visions from meetings one and two, and to write, using a specific formula, one goal statement, which is a broad, big idea about where they want to advance that goal area, and then underneath that goal statement, write four to seven objectives that are more tactical in nature, but support the goal and move the goal forward. And these, on the next few pages, are what you see as our goal statements and our objectives from each of the areas. Let's go one, goal two, goal three, four, and five. So lastly, I mentioned the action plans, and it's helpful sometimes to look at what an action plan can look like. This is really just a sort of high-level template for it, but you can see that each of the goals has a number of major activities that are going to be put forward against that goal, and you can see that there's very specific values assigned relative to staff, the resources that'll be needed, the timeline, and the success indicators. The Board's role in this, of course, is to ensure that through its oversight responsibilities, the work that is expected to be done within the district day-to-day is being done, and, of course, if there are things that need to change along the way, so, I don't know, maybe a worldwide pandemic crops up again, that we can make appropriate, appropriate changes to the plan and still move forward in the direction that we had hoped for. Excuse me. And I just want to leave you with a quick quote from Margaret Mead, which says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has," and the group of committed citizens that we had throughout this process was both impressive and hardworking and really bought into the spirit of finding a great direction forward for Riverdale schools. So I thank you very much for your time. I have delivered the final binders for the administration and the booklets for the Board of Education, and understand that we expect, as is the nature of the binders that we gave to administration, that the action plans will become part of that, and any changes will be added to that over time, so that there's always a living, breathing record of the work that's being done against the strategic plan. So if there are any questions, happy to take them now. Other than that...
I'll offer my thanks first for your participation and actually leading us through the entire process for all three of the meetings, and certainly for your presentation tonight. This presentation will be on our website, probably by tomorrow, we'll have it up, and as we develop the action plan, that will also go to accompany your presentation, and any developments of the action plan that happen over time will be updated on the website as well. So I appreciate the effort that you put into it. I thought it was a great process. Being only here for a year and a half, it was kind of thought-provoking for me to hear the perspectives of many of the parents that we had involved and affirming in many ways as well. So, thank you, Matt.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Also would like to thank you, the public that participated, and...
The board members.
...the board members that participated in the, in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I have a question for you. As you developed the action, in what you talked, it comes back to the board in the form of my report for the board, and on the action plan.
Since it's long-term, I think it would be great. I don't know if it comes through a committee session or to the whole board, but...
I would say the whole board.
Okay. If we could do that before it's kind of blessed into action.
I think any revision to the action plans would be voted. We do have board approval prior to, we should have board approval of those as well.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, move back to the agenda. Old business. Now, old business, any new business? Nope. Okay. All right, at this point in the agenda, I'd like to open it up to the public. Please step up to the mic, state your name, your town, and please try to keep it to three minutes, so everybody gets a chance to speak.
My name is Diane Hoodie. I live in Oradell, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I know that I've been posting some information on Facebook. Recently, it was brought to my attention about an issue of vaping in the schools, in our school particularly, but also throughout. It's okay, they can hear me. I've heard from numerous students that you go into the bathroom in the school, and there are kids hanging around, they're vaping, often five, six kids sitting on the floor, and it's a bit out of control. I know, I've been in touch with Mr. Pepe, and I know that the school is trying to make some efforts to control the problem, but I feel like it's not enough. According to some of the surveys that I've read and reaching out to the American Lung Association regarding the issue, there's a lot more that can be done. Clearly, there's an epidemic not only in our town, but in all the towns throughout the country and in the county. Nicotine is primarily what they're doing. There are some kids that are doing marijuana, but I think primarily what's happening in the schools is nicotine-based, which means that the kids are breathing in chemicals that are cancer-causing, and they're exposing it to other kids that might not want to have it exposed to and be introduced to, especially, like, it primarily appears to be that it's more the senior classmen, and they're exposing it to the younger classmen. I think as parents, and I think hopefully as a board, that we want to do as much as we can to keep the parents involved and the students involved. Kids are influenced by social media and influenced by their upper classmen, and it's a problem. What brought this to my attention is my kid got caught, and I thank God that he did. I've been working with Mr. Flanagan, he's been very helpful, and that's how I got introduced to Mr. Pepe, but it's really, really challenging. I mean, my husband stays home, he's on top of him, and even with that, he's doing it right under our nose, and I'm so concerned about how many other parents have this happening, and they're not aware of it. Vaping is very hard to catch, and that's one of the issues that the school has had. Previously, they've tried to put detectors in the bathrooms, but apparently, Mr. Pepe said it didn't really work. However, I've reached out to a number of companies, and I sent links to Mr. Pepe, that the technology has come a far way since he first introduced them, and I think it's something that needs to be considered in order to try and control the epidemic that's happening. Mr. Pepe also mentioned that there was going to be some kind of conversation that was going, the kids were going to have an assembly, he was only going to include the upper classmen. He's now decided that possibly they will include the freshmen and sophomores as well. I want to read to you a post that someone replied to in my Facebook. It says, "My daughter and her friends said that using bathrooms is almost impossible. Girls are lying on the floor in a circle vaping. There are certain bathrooms that they know to avoid. While I understand this is a parent issue, what if the parents do not know how they can address it or fix it? Something needs to be done, and I'm not sure if the bathrooms can be checked throughout the day." Another parent said to me, "My son and so many of his kids and so many of his friends are addicted to vaping. Some kids cannot sleep without getting, cannot stop without getting wicked headaches if they don't vape." He said, "It's everywhere in the school, and there's no way to avoid it. He hates what this has done to his friends, and he's so pissed that the school does not watch over the bathrooms and protect his friends." I'm not here to point fingers. I think that the reason that I came tonight is to say that, is there any way that we can address this problem and try to work together as parents and the school and the administration to try to see what we can do to improve the situation? For me at home, I started testing my son. He comes in sometimes two, three days a week, and he has to pee in a cup. First couple of times he got caught, he was grounded really bad, and the last couple of weeks, we've seen a difference, and I've also seen a difference in his anger, his ability to communicate, like, I'm seeing some positive responses. I've brought him to the doctor, the doctor went through all the terrible things, there's a lot of information out there, and I've continued to give a great deal of it to Mr., I've sent him, he's probably sick of me, I just keep sending him bits of information, try this, call that. The American Lung Association has some great, great programs to help schools, and I'm just pleading that we do what we can as a community to try to help our kids. Thank you.
While you're still standing?
Yes.
So, I know you've had a couple of conversations, Mr. Pepe, about the issue that you brought forward. I appreciate any parent that brings an issue forward. I would say at the outset, the way to bring an issue forward, I mean, we have not met before, I'm the superintendent of schools, you didn't come to me to bring anything to my attention, you went to social media first.
No, I went to Mr. Flanagan first.
No, but I'm saying, well, that's because your child was caught, and that's why the conversation happened.
Absolutely. Before that, I knew it was an issue.
Right, so, my point is that I'm happy to talk to any parent about any concerns or any issues they have, whether it's this or anything else. I mean, I have an open door, Mr. Pepe does as well. We do take it seriously, and you're absolutely right, this is a serious problem everywhere in society.
It is.
And it's in all of our health curriculum, from grade seven through 11 at least, 12 is different because of different kind of health that we're covering there. We have cooperation from the municipal alliance, we have cooperation from the PTSO that sponsors events, four speakers come into our school, I know Mr. Pepe mentioned a couple to you that we're doing this year, we've had others in the short time that I've been here. We also have parent programs, which unfortunately are not well-attended. When we, when we offer an offering for our students in school, we often have a parent presentation that evening or shortly thereafter, and we really don't get any attendance at all on that. And as you said before, I mean, you're obviously proactive with your child, and you recognized an issue, and I appreciate your candor in bringing that forward in a public meeting, but many parents, we don't hear from, and it's important that they understand that they have opportunity to learn something as well. I'm sure you've learned a lot, just from looking into what you've looked into.
And I've seen change already, just communicating.
I appreciate that.
I mean, with the school, like, they've started opening the doors, so in the bathroom, the kids, the hallway door will be opened, and...
Actually, we've done that previously, that's not just a new thing, and we do monitor bathrooms all throughout the day, boys' and girls' bathrooms, doesn't mean it doesn't happen all the time, but we are monitoring the bathrooms. You mentioned the vape detectors, I'm the president of Volaburg County Superintendents, and yes, technology has increased over the years, and we are looking into some of the ones that you, you mentioned one specifically that we have reached out to, to see if that's a creative or alternative suggestion for us to follow up on. So, we're all ears, we're all looking into the best interest of our students, make sure that they are healthy. One of the objectives in the strategic plan was health and wellness, and that was one of the items that was brought up, and it wasn't just about mental health, a lot of it was mental health, but a lot of it was just making sure our kids are safe and understand the dangers of vaping and many other controlled dangerous substances that came up in our conversations with both parents.
You know, I know that it comes up in the, in the health class, but I think if we all realize that kids, they need to see it frequently, like, once in a health class, and they talk about it in the beginning of the health class.
Especially, it's a major part of the curriculum, in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade especially, major part of it. In fact, this is, this is not something I deserve myself, but I've heard it from other superintendents, it seems that vaping has taken the place of cigarette use in the curriculum.
Absolutely.
So, it seems that that shift has happened in the last couple of years, so I do know it's a major point.
And it's hard to detect. You know, you can walk by, and you don't smell anything.
Absolutely.
You don't see anything in the air, so it's a huge challenge.
It is.
For the school and for us as parents.
It is, but I do appreciate that you brought the issue forward. I'm happy that there is conversation between you and the principal. We want the best interest, we're all for the best interests of our students, and I'm sure we can work together. I'm hoping maybe, you know, you're here, and there's a couple other parents here as well, maybe people will be more proactive about coming to some of the events that we do sponsor. We have Wellness Wednesdays, actually, they are sponsored by our Teachers Association as donated money towards Wellness Wednesdays, and this has been a topic in one of the Wellness Wednesdays, I think in last year, we didn't have any parents come to that either, so...
My son is a freshman, so I'm new, I mean, of course, we were in the other school.
We've got you for four more years, it's excellent.
And, you know, it's, it's a challenge.
I do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Claudia.
Hi, Claudia O'Neill, River Edge. I just wanted to comment, I am one of the people that sits on the River Edge Municipal Alliance. I saw your post on Facebook. I will be honest with you, I also sat on that side of the table up until January of this year, so I've had the luxury of listening and also now being on this side. I will tell you, from an alliance perspective, we work very closely with the schools, both the middle school, especially the middle school, and the high school. We funnel all our money that we possibly can into these programs, and the unfortunate thing are, we have a captive audience with the children, we have no captive audience with the parents, and it's a little frustrating when you're spending money and promoting, and nobody shows up. So I would suggest, if you want, Oradell has a municipal chair, he'd be willing to work with you, I'm sure. We can talk offline after the meeting, but obviously, they need, you need support from the parents and a buy-in from the parents. There's only so much that the faculty can do in a short period of time during the daytime. So, I just wanted to let that, let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Diane's husband. Yeah, it's a problem. I mean, I know my son's a strong-headed kid, and I know he just got caught up in it because everyone's doing it. I mean, it's, it's not a few, it's a lot of kids, it's regularly, I mean, there's got to be a way to create a vape school, a vape-free school. I mean, there's got to be a way to do it, there's the detectors, whatever, so that every time they go in, we even spoke with my son, who's 23 now, who was here, and he said, "Oh yeah, that was going on all the time when I was here also. I just, you know, I was in sports, I couldn't do it, you know, but it was going on all the time." There's got to be a way that we can say, you know what, let's figure out a way to make sure, you know, you know, Riverdale's, it's vape-free, that's it, you know, we have the detectors, we have people that go by, whatever, and we get parents involved? I'll get parents involved. We need parents? I have a loud mouth, I'll get out there and get people going, but I think we can actually look at, you know, how can we make this where, we don't have that problem anymore, and we'll work with the board, we'll work with the parents, you know, whatever we need to do, but we can make it happen together for sure, and I think the students will feel like, ah, less pressure, I don't have to worry about that, it's not even a concern, we can, you know, go ahead and go to school, and that's not an issue, so they can put more focus on other things also, which I think is huge. I think when it's there, it's like a problem that's brewing with a lot of kids. I know my son, since he was grounded and now doing much better, but it's been three weeks or four weeks, he doesn't hang out with over half, I mean, he's very social, he doesn't hang out with over half the friends he used to hang out with, and I know why. He's afraid if he goes to the house or goes to that party, they're going to be vaping, and, but to know that the school's a sanctuary where that's not going to happen, I think it'd be fabulous. You know, we talk about, how can we improve, what are the things we... You know, we talk about, how can we improve, or what things can we do in the school, I think it's one of the things that could be tremendous, to know that, wow, this is vape-free, and hopefully that could pass on to other school districts also, and they can see the same thing. And again, I can, I can reach out to parents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
...